And the topics from the work session or what we're going to discuss will be the bipolar project, the ESSER funding, one-time bonus options in the COVID-19 close contact identification protocol. It will be no official actions, no votes will be taken, we're just going to discuss this in open session. So the first thing we're going to be on this will be for the bipolar project.
Well, I guess there's just, it's a decision that was made and then there's some discussion about the comptrollers before, I guess it's just whether yes or no to go forward with it and or discuss it or not. Does Jamie do the, it's done been passed, right?
We look back at the motion and it was passed pending approval from the state comptroller. I don't know that I can sit here and say that we've necessarily gotten that out of they've given us this letter of their actual discouraging purchase of this product. Now, the approval was for the purchase method, not so much the quality of the product. However, part of the opinion about the ability to purchase it in this manner was the fact that there was energy efficiency associated with it. This letter seems to raise the question as to whether that truly is the case with this things of product. But because, one, Mr. Smith and I both felt compelled, having received this letter, he did, that we should share it more. And secondly, after going back in our paper grade minutes and looking at the paper motion that Mr. Manning made, it looks as if that was subject to the comptroller giving its approval. And I can't sit here and tell you that they have for sure done that for us on that. But it wasn't really from the point of view of how it was purchased, it's more from the point of view of quality of the product.
So in his, in his letter, he didn't say we should do it, we shouldn't, he didn't give an opinion?
Cautious, I believe is how they put it. Be very cautious in undertaking this product. And then I think Mr. Smith has spoken with some other systems, I don't know how many you're using it personally, but no, this letter is not from the comptroller, it's one that they were distributing from a group of doctors and some others. But it just encouraged districts to exercise caution and unstating the purchase of these items. And again, we, I didn't feel like we could receive something like this and not share it with them. That wouldn't be the right thing to do at all. And in essence, the comptroller will not give us an opinion on the purchase of it. That's the way it would be a person, they won't do that. They wouldn't hear from Mr. Smith and they won't give us one.
Well, it looks like, I don't know if this is a good system or a bad system. The only thing I base my opinion on is the higher quality reports that are done in this central office here. You know, I've got a copy of it.
Where's it at, Tommy?
Right here in your board package, about halfway over. If you have, if you have to take. What this has done, this was a higher quality that was deducted by EMSA company out of Indianapolis, Indiana. And all I know is, when they come in here in October and get higher quality samples, Mr. Man's office and the Thomas Rim and the break room, they've got a whole bunch of stuff to complete, special moldings. Actually, they put the purification system in, they come back in November, 19, that was November, 19, and then another higher sample. And if you'll notice on your report there, that went away from nine minutes. Even the mold was, was, was put out of higher quality. The comptroller still had a few things left in. So that's kind of what I, you know, when this comes up, I don't scud, you went through this.
I read it three times till I thought my eyes were going to bleed.
So now I, I based my decision on that, you know, to spend the money to do this. And I thought we had already had it put in. Matter of fact, over the summer, parents were even asking me, hey, did we get that power system put in, higher going to be more prudent?
Yeah.
I thought we did, but it turned out we didn't.
Me too.
Now, I don't know how you all want to go about this, but there's only a couple of ways this right here can be repeated. I believe being a motion was made and seconded and passed, we'd have to rescind this. Is this not correct?
Well, the motion was subject to the comptrollers' approval.
They did not approve or disapprove.
Correct.
So it's still at our limit?
Yes.
Are you saying that he will not issue an approval?
I'm saying we have not gotten an opinion from him. Yes, now I can't predict what the comptroller's office will go and do. When we asked for that, we received what we provided to the board with this open letter.
Mr. Winkler, what do, what will be the repercussions, I guess, if we went ahead and done this and this thing don't work? And comptrollers are telling us all along that they're, they can't say yes or no? Is there any repercussions from the state?
An audit, I have an audit fund. But again, what he, if it truly does what it says it does, it's exempt from the bidding requirement.
Exempt from what?
The bidding requirement. And that was the true inquiry of the comptroller. Then we got this report related to the quality. So I mean, they could, you know, raise an issue from that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to address one thing, Mr. Manning said, Tommy, what you, you pointed out, you know, part of this study even indicated a pretty dramatic reduction in mold.
Yes, it did.
And that's a big issue, you know, a lot of people develop all kinds of illnesses and things just from mold in and of itself, like the COVID-19 out of, and just talk about that part of it, you know, if it, you know, who's to say, you know, I know that we've had it in this building, you know, we may have had an employer, whatever, here that contracted as well. But who's to say instead of one, you would have had 20 had you not had it? But the mold factor in there, you know, I worked in a building once upon a time, in a state building, that was overrun by, people sick, son, I mean, bad sick. And when they had to get down and just strip the walls and the corrocks and everything else.
That's the deal, mold has to be remediated.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think that's why, when it's decent.
It just, that's, that's a big deal in and of itself, the mold will end up.
And it's in the report there, that's just, the report's been posified, which I don't know.
I find that hard to believe.
I find that hard to believe.
It's two to tell.
It hasn't been served by. And that's kind of why I was thinking, because your career, these arch district units, especially the wall units, I guarantee you there's some mold in these wall units probably somewhere in that water plant somewhere, maybe possibly.
In every school.
In every school.
What, can I ask you another question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying, I don't want to like dictate me. Should we, let's go the other way, then. Let's say that, that we rescind that, this was to be purchased with ESSER funding, is that right?
Yes, sir.
We're not even sure that could be utilized in another way.
It would have to be, Jamie would have to tell you the specifics on under the parts we send in a motion, but even if that got to that point, we would have to go back and get approval to spend it on something else. He couldn't just take it and say, I'm going to put it here or there.
Go give raises or go do whatever, you can't just.
We don't know what they allow or not allow.
We don't, we don't have any guarantee they would grant anything we want to do, is that correct?
Any one, sir.
Regardless of what we asked for, we don't have any guarantee that grant.
No, you don't know.
That they'd allow us to use that.
Like one's basically done spent, two is done appropriated, you'd have to go back, you know, we don't know they would let us.
What's the chances that they would?
That's, you don't know, just being honest with it, federal government.
It depends on what you ask for.
Yeah, you know, more than likely they would certain plans, but you don't know. And a lot of it, they just like, kind of like the English teacher you get in college, it varies depending on who audits it and who you got, you know what I mean? But it's almost just on a Tennessee.
I just wondered how difficult it would be to shift that kind of funding around, you know?
It would be difficult to shift it manually, it's just would they approve, we've got to wait and see, it's just a waiting game to see what they'll approve in place of it.
But they did approve this.
They did approve this.
So the only issue, I mean, the issue I've got with it is comptrollers are not giving their blessing, and when they don't do that, that like, to me, it opens up a problem.
Without the blessing, what's the timeline on having to spend that money for that project?
Yeah, three, yeah.
Two to three years.
Two to three years, depending on that cost, yeah. We, and again, we felt compelled, it wasn't that we could have, because we thought we were fixing to put it in the next week's, but you know, we got the letters, the state comptroller physically ran us down because we made, it was kind of hard to find for three, four days. It's our job to let y'all know. He called us in the front office and we felt like that the board needed to know that. And then Jamie tried to get the official opinion and writing, it was pretty vague too, wasn't it, first?
And the exact words were, they wanted us to know that before we purchased the units.
And I looked at Norman and I said, and winked, and I said, so you're telling us, no, we're not telling you not to. We're highly suggesting that you take a strong look at this before you purchase it. He wouldn't give us an opinion, the Tennessee couldn't guarantee it and didn't think there was energy efficiency, I'm also a hundred.
That's the only thing that really bothers me, is that they felt that strongly about it, want to give an opinion. But that's just me.
Well, that's me too, I mean, states had said, no, it, the system's not any good, it don't work, or they should have turned around and said, yeah, it worked, go ahead and do it, you know? That's, that's my problem, is, you know.
The people approving the E plan though, is a totally different department, it's the education consultants from the comptrollers and audit department. It's like the right hand and the left hand not communicating, I think.
We even get contrasted sometimes between the regional office of finance and the comptroller department.
I mean, it's two totally different state department, departments that's approving this.
Was there a systems that's been put in place that we can do a, some kind of evaluation of, of the energy efficiency in this of it? And if we have wrong, or if it was done, then, I mean, we've been approved.
We, we have this one, because you know, like Scotty, Mr. Lewis said earlier, you know, we had several cases, but who's to say we wouldn't have 40? There's no real way to measure what you would or wouldn't have had, I guess so to speak. You could probably give us some, I can't find, I'm sure you could provide a list, but I can't find anybody like at the superintendent's conference that's using it or not using it, okay? I tried to look, but I'm sure you've got a list of people that we could go visit and, and, and look at and talk to them.
I have contacts, director of schools.
Where are they?
Hancock County, we actually installed that less than a month ago.
Yeah.
And it's funny, this open letter that was sent, if you research the author of the open letter with the link that was sent, she owns a competitor, competitive company to GPS.
Oh, the office, yeah.
Yeah, and GPS actually has a lawsuit against them and has discovered all of their emails that have also said, you know, hey, GPS is really getting into the school system, we need to figure out ways to campaign against it. In their personal, in their business emails. So in its, Tennessee is the only state that's having a hiccup with GPS. And it's because of Paul Cross's letter that was sent out to be intended.
And I was interested, I'm sure you.
We spoke with Paul Cross.
It's put a halt on several people where we're at because we don't, they don't know what to do.
And it's funny because Paul Cross actually has nothing to do with ESSER funds. He does grants. And he said, if somebody comes across my desk looking for a grant or a loan, nothing to do with ESSER funds.
But, but he did handle our energy efficiency grant though, correct?
Well, it's, he was actually referring to loans. So if you go to Paul, and, because they have very low interest rate on loans.
True, that's how we knew, yeah.
And like I said, and he's the one that sent the link to that article, which they call the open letter. But anyways, back to school systems, like I said, we put them in Hancock, Bristol City schools, and these are the school systems in Tennessee that have done this post Paul Cross's letter. And I know for sure, there's private schools in Nashville, I don't know if you guys are, if you can be interested in private schools. And then Washington County schools, which is where Johnson City is, those are some of the bigger ones that have done it. Gwinnett County, Atlanta, they have them in all their schools. There are articles, there are videos from news tidbits of all people that have been GPS. I've tried to, I've offered to Mr. Smith to bring a representative from GPS to give you guys this information personally, and they can show you even the discovery stuff from their lawsuit. Because of the board meeting and your approval, I purchased those ionizers. So I have those ionizers sitting in my warehouse. Did I have a contract, did I have a PO? I took a risk off of board approval. So I have put myself in an unusual position that I normally don't do as a small business But, and, you know, I didn't know where, I know Paul Cross has had that letter sent out, but I've been kind of waiting to hear from Smith County and I've called and haven't heard and that's my reason for showing up tonight, when I saw that it was on the agenda.
This, this has been putting this, this issue here in this building since October last year of November, when this was filed. Can we not look at the utilities of this building? And see if the utility of this building is shone down, or has it gone up?
Well, part of the energy efficiency is changing the air intake. You guys have air intake on all of your buildings and they're set at a standard, at a certain amount. Well, that can be lowered, which means that your HVAC system can condition less air, which is more energy efficient, because every time you pull in outside air, it has to clean it, it's pulling out all the humidity and cooling it. And that's where they claim for the energy efficiency. It all is by reducing the outdoor air intake.
Okay, how about, I'm just going to throw this out here and everybody can agree or disagree. Let her bring this guy in next board meeting, can you do that?
Yes, sir.
Have every piece of information you can come up with.
Yes, sir.
And present it to us. Postpone this thing and let, bring it to us and let us postpone it 30 days and what about Tommy? Marty, y'all the one that done the motions on this, are y'all okay with this?
I can hold on, but I tell you what, if you won't be rescinding, now it won't happen.
Do what now?
I said, I'm trying to postpone it to next board meeting, but if y'all want to ask me to rescind my motion tonight, it will not happen.
Well, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not going to ask you to do that, no. I'm not asking you to do that, I'm just asking you, can we just postpone it, let her bring these people in?
Yeah, I'm good, life.
Okay. Marty, you okay with that?
I'm saying why Tommy.
Okay.
On biggest thing, and I'll just say this and I'll shut up about it. We've got to keep in mind one thing, Rob suggested we keep in mind one thing, just pass you down, and she's purchased that equipment because it passed you in.
Yeah, and that's right, I'm saying, you know, I understand that she's made, purchased this, I'm a business person myself and I know what you get into in situations like that. But give us 30 days, you bring all the information in that you can come up with and this person you've got, and then we'll go from there.
Is there something I need to do or will I automatically be on the agenda?
We'll put you on the agenda. You'll be on the agenda.
To make sure.
Yes, sir.
You can't vote table at the meetings.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, when the meeting starts, I'm just saying this is what we want to do, but we're not going to vote right now, but.
Could you get us?
The meeting will be in three weeks.
Pardon?
November's meeting's moved up.
It's October 12.
The October's meeting, yeah, October's meeting.
And if anybody, if she, I'll line it, if she'll get me the names of anybody that's using the system and anybody would like to go, had questions, I'll line up a trip and we'll go talk to the principal or the director and, and, would you mind doing that?
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
Okay, okay, all right. Any more questions?
Did you bring your business cards with you?
I did.
Can I please have maybe two before you leave?
One last thing, you talked about rescinding the motion.
You're welcome.
If you're intent on moving forward, you might have to take out that clause that's causing us to hiccup. I'm not sure what you were saying.
Controll.
Yes, sir. So it might have to be for that purpose.
Okay, we'll get into that, we've got, we'll get into that unfinished business when we get into the board meeting and then you direct us on how that Mr. Manning needs to do what he needs to do, how about that?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay, you and Mr. Manning? Okay, all right, let's go on to the ESSER funding.
Okay, I'm going to talk and then Norman, sure if you get any questions, all right. This is very open, you know, I've heard the comments, some people want to know where it's being spent, this can't be any more open than this is. If anybody wants to look at it on a detail, we'd be happy to show that to anybody. ESSER one, and this is a brief outline, was basically premarked, it let us go back in paper gloves, COVID sprays that were approved, masks, we did purchase Chromebooks, stuff that was needed on the, on the first round, they go, we got a reimbursement. ESSER two was pretty much earmarked for the cafeteria at Carter Joe Mitchell School, they allowed us to do that. Roofing, we've got several roof projects going right now, matter of fact, that's the contract, so thank you handing me there. And ESSER three is what we discussed going forward, all those have been submitted, because ESSER one and two is pretty much locked in, and ESSER three is laying down there right now to be approved. We went by the surveys like they asked us to do, we helped the public forms. If you get any questions, we'll be happy to answer, I'm trying to be vague, Norman, sure you're asking, if you want to, if you want to see the breakdowns of specifically of what they were spending, we'll be happy to pull those for you.
I will say this, Mr. Smith and Norman do an excellent job on this budget stuff, but we've got board members here that are putting them in a hard place. If you're wanting something done, that takes a pretty good chunk of money to do, this needs to be put in the budget to be done and not just all out of the blue say, we need a million dollars to do this and we need to do that. I don't like that. I don't like it at all. And there, there's no reason for it. Now, don't get me wrong, there's emergencies that come up that we have to have a particular item that would cost several thousands of dollars. I understand that, that's, that's fine, but when we get in here and start jumping in and saying, we need to spend a half million dollars or a million dollars in the middle of the year, it just messes the budget up completely. And I just don't like that, I'm just going to tell you right up front, I don't like it. And that's about all I got to say about that.
Well, I'll echo your sentiments and then I'll host ambassador's one. We have a fund balance because we manage our budget. Like you're in trouble, they.
Absolutely.
They manage our budget, that's, that's the reason we have money. And just because we have fund balance, doesn't mean that fund balance can be just spent.
Absolutely.
I mean, you have to maintain a certain degree of that earmarked with federal funds and things like that. So now, we need to, we've done well living within our means, staying within a budget we set, we need to stay on that path, it's just my opinion, we're just, we're not voting because.
The biggest thing, I think, all y'all try to get out in these schools and try to do what's for the staff, but February, March is when we start putting together, so if you see something or need something, try to let us know, you know, just like, it's, we work for y'all, okay? So if you see something that's needed, then we can start looking for, there's so many of these, like, you know, you asked for a, for both schools something the other day, and we said, hey, if we're planning, why don't we get it through safety grants, you know, we don't like to spend, if we know a lot of these things, we can do a lot of planning. And a lot of this stuff, they spread their money out there, and these monies out there, you might not get it today, but we can, we can do it, so they haven't taken down their fund balance, doing a much better job preserving their funds.
And that's what I did, I come to him, and that's what we're supposed to do as board members, we're supposed to come to him. And this was a project that was going to benefit Smith County High School and Goresville. And it wasn't a tremendous amount of money, but it was several thousand dollars. And I wanted him to think about it, maybe to look at it and then maybe by next budget, work it into the budget, or if there's some kind of grants come out there that we could do it with.
That's what I thought you about, yours, we think we might do a two-year deal, but we can do both of it, not cost the county anything.
Right, and I just come up with that, just, well, I come up with it over the weekend, and it would benefit both high schools or both school systems, well, complete, and.
There's a, there's a lot of stuff out there right now, if, you know, like I said, it's not like going to the, and pulling it and getting the money at the bank, you know, but there's a lot of monies that we've seen that's there, if we know what you want us to go, and then we can write grants and there's a lot of avenues right now to dip into.
It's just no different than months ago, I came to you with a couple of things, I thought we'd done it, but if it was months ago, I didn't want to.
We got it free, fencing and, you know.
Yeah, got it done. And that's what you need, that's what I'm telling you, you've got to do as a board member, come to him and at least tell him what you've got in your mind and then he can say.
We start planning.
We can start planning for it, and if it's not a grant that we can write to get the money with, then it can be put in the budget to be done.
We've got a, we've got a good fund balance, a healthy fund balance, but we can't now, if we get into the year, it's a pretty big deal to go in front of the county commission. They, we can't, I can't imagine they'd say no, but they could, you know, they, they control, if we take in front of, you know, how many, what, two of y'all served, I don't know, sitting here looking at it, but they could say no, they control that money. And, you know, we don't like to have to ask if we don't, have to, sometimes you have to, you know what I mean?
It's like the big bear, you don't poke him unless you absolutely have to.
We don't have to.
You know, that's just the way I look at it. Anything else on ESSER?
We have a fund balance, but you can't just write a check against it at any time unless it's already been approved in the budget. So if we use fund balance for any reason, it is another budget amendment process for budget and finance through the school board and through the county commission. So it's different, you know, than just having a checkbook and having money there and writing a check. It has to either be put in the budget or you have to go back and ask more.
And I encourage each and every one of you to go make you a list, you know, throughout the year, I do, that's, I've got several lists and there's stuff I want to try to put next year, make a list, and then when we have that budget meeting, you know, that's where I'd like to see us be real open and say, you know, can we do it, can we not? You know, is that realistic and where can we gather that, make that federal money? Can we write a, a lot of times we can do a two or three-year deal and get most, a lot of what we've been very fortunate here is not cost the county anything.
Anything else to add? Norman, you have anything else to add?
Did that make sense though?
Yes, ma'am, it did to me and I, I reckon to everybody, nobody said anything. So let's go on to the COVID-19 close contact identification protocol, Mr. Smith.
The, the actual protocol, we're talking about what we're getting into, I know Mr. Lewis had asked me, I wrote down here, I can't remember what it was, and then some, Mr. Glover mentioned the other night about doing something for teachers and our staff. In the meantime, what I would ask y'all, if you would give, give the lens, give me time to kind of do a study instead of, if we can get, TOS has come out with something, TSBA has done it very vague, and then I'm trying to talk to other directors, just so we kind of get, I don't mean we have to do what they do, but it'll give us some direction, kind of, you know, we need, one thing we'd have to do, the reason I want to take our time doing it, it's not fair, say, I see Scots, you know, where I use them for, it's not sorry for a Scott Apple that missed back early to not get to use the benefit of the days if we do something and that, say a Leslie Smith that done it now. So we got to figure out whether it's fair for the people that started, say, retroactive back to August the 1st, or whatever date we use. And it will have some things decided, like, like one that TOS is using, an example they're giving, first, I'll just give you their example, what I think Nashville's using. At first, I thought it was kind of ridiculous, it's too many days, but then when I looked at it, it's pretty genius what they did, they're giving two, they can get 20 days, one teacher can get 20 COVID days, they can get two 10-day periods, all right, if they're too sick to teach, but, which they encourage them to do it remote, but they're asking that you be vaccinated for you to be able to get that, that's just something that you can think about. There's different things, we can build this kind of how we want to, individualize for our system, but I can get you some better examples. There's different things, we can build this, kind of how we want to, individualize for our system, but I can get you some better examples, if you'll give me time, but it's time next. I tried to get some this past week, and nobody didn't really have any up at the conference or that, but I do have the one at T S B, or T O S S, T O S S has recommended. But I try to get, T S B A's got one, but it's extremely vague, you just got a blank contract, basically, and you fill it in. But hopefully, I can get some more directors to see some, what some other system are doing around it, so we can kind of be consistent.
Can I just say?
Yes, sir.
What, just kind of help everybody know where I came from on that, I called Director Smith because of the impact of our employees, you know, exhausting leave time because being hit with COVID or whatever, and having burned up all the lead and all that stuff, and my question to him was, could we not do a study or something to utilize, not, you know, amend the budget or anything? But we, we've already set the budget, you know what I mean, this, this money's not spent, but this money's already in the budget for salaries, whatever, and it's laying over here, there you go. Is there not a way that we can look at compensating these people from this, that's already been established in the budget? Because they've had to mend some something that's out of their control. Just exploring ways to try to take care of our employees without having to go through a budget amendment or something like that with funds that we've already set aside to pay. So that's kind of where my question to him came from.
What's the protocol right now? Say, I, I'm a teacher, and I've got twenty five sick days, and I'm now positive with COVID. I use my sick days?
Free C S S.
Or if I have those sick days?
And you, and that's where this would kick in, that's where the, we gotta write a policy, and then also, you'd want something, it's not fair, if there's a COVID thing out there, and we can help these people, they could preserve those regular sick days, so to speak, if they met this protocol. So it would be protecting over and beyond helping you, your teachers or staff, overall, you know.
But isn't Tennessee, have gotten my ideas, we paying for ten days? Don't they get, if you're diagnosed with COVID, aren't we supposed to pay for ten days, can they get up to ten days' pay?
If, is it up to ten days? It's, it's, it's actually expired, didn't it, when we looked at?
There was a federal, there was a federal statute that expired December of last year.
It expired, that's true, we gotta come up, Tommy, with something different.
Deal with this like this last year, there was a federal law for all employers that provided for that.
It's in that, I think it's in your thing here. But that's where you can write.
It is, it was in the twenty ones.
I don't know, again, why they don't just come out, it would help us if the governor, commissioner, education, would just come out with a standard, but they basically give us a blank to fill in. So we gotta come up with our own.
Again, my point was, we've already pushed this money, so we're not asking for an amendment, we're not asking over and beyond, this money we've already set to the side. Hasn't been spent yet, but, but it's open, if that makes sense to you.
I'll say this, the principals and the staff done an excellent job, which is a little different, hers are hands-on, and you can't hardly get by, but they did an excellent job overall for the sick days we missed, they did a super job of taking our full-time sub, or taking somebody in the building and covering a lot of those positions, so it didn't, the only thing, like what Scotty's talking about, you eat anything, is you'd have to call subs in, which would be very minimal. But they did a really good job of absorbing that in the building and covering a lot of those positions without having to call extra money in. The full-time subs save just a lot of money, because they put two or three classes together.
But, Clay, you know, most people don't realize that federal law that he was talking about actually expired last December, so, you know, everybody's been kind of hanging out there since then.
So, so what about those teachers that, that are new this year, that didn't have these sick days, that's already been out for COVID?
That's, that's what we're saying, we'd have to give time to go back and do something, it would be fair for those, we're, like, I don't think that's fair, because we didn't have a policy in place that I got sick August, first week in August. We'd have to go back and restore those days or help them, and like Scotty said, I think, it already in the budget, it wouldn't cost us anything, so we could probably, in theory, with the board's permission, or a board vote, could put those days back, and they would have a brandy those original days.
Go have a sick day, you're sick, you're leaving that day.
Correct, but I mean, I just, I, like I said, I, I just didn't think it was fair, I think those, that we should be able to give those days back.
And I don't, I don't think it's fair to start it today, like some systems have done, or some, like, you know, companies, and go forward, I don't think it's fair, just 'cause I didn't catch it. We need to work out, give us time to go back and restore those, replenish them.
No, that's what I'm saying, we've set this budget months ago, so about the fall, and, you know, it's already money laying there.
The only, and Jamie, this is a, the only real issue I see of that, I guess it's the honor system, I mean, going back and figuring out the doctor's excuse, how you're, put them back, but a lot of it's just gonna be basically.
I had approved, principals have had to pay real costs, but I see no legal restriction, like, retro, so if you had somebody that had to miss in, in August for COVID.
Even if they wasn't sick, if it was just an exposure, they still would be.
If it still.
If it fell under the protocol.
You could reinstate those, those days.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll just take that to only be fair if we.
I agree, sir. But in, in the system, I know this is everywhere, I'm sure it happens here in this county. Some people are doing a lot of exposure.
Again, a lot of it's gonna go, yeah.
I'll tell you, I know, it's, it's everywhere, not even, I'm pretty sure it's in the script system too, I'm pretty sure it's in factories and plants.
Listen, we found out real quick, I can tell you, they, they certain places, takes five days to get a test, some of them get overnight. Everybody, some people know that, that's just, that's what I said, the honor system is gonna have, and then, we deal with it all the time, it's just, I'm saying, it is what it is, some greed, you gotta.
Well, wouldn't that, wouldn't that Mr. Attorney fall on our shoulders to set the policy and protocol?
Yes, you, you would have to set the policy and be up to your director and your principals to make sure that it got followed, whatever method approved, they chug, whether it's honor system and ask somebody, or whether you require a doctor's excuse or a health department.
I understand we could regulate how it was done.
They're required to keep records, so it's not hard to go back a couple of months and get records.
But I can, if, if you allow me to do that, I can bring you back some examples and recommendations from the legal all the way down to T S B A and T O S S, and what other systems are done. Choose from next time, you can develop within that.
Please do.
Any other questions on this? I got in a hurry, and I jumped pages on it, and now you can get into the, uh, COVID nineteen close contact.
Well, that's, that's kind of what, I was doing all that to get you talking about are different, and then, uh, I'll give you some numbers, the one, our numbers are, we were about ninety, that's what we were running, ninety positive cases a day, I think today we're down to about twenty-five or thirty, so we're bouncing back and forth. County's about the same overall, if you're getting anything, it's running about two hundred and forty-two to about two seventy-five in that bracket every day. I don't think the overall numbers have changed a lot. We're still seeing a lot of it, we're doing, hopefully, a better job of coping with it. It is a managerial nightmare, I mean, you come in and you got four bus drivers out, or, I was on the phone at five o'clock in East Tennessee the other morning, because she had four routes, bus drivers called in. You know, it's just part of it, so I think we're gonna live with this the rest of our life, I mean, for several years now. It's just, it's, it's a, it's a challenge every day, I mean, you don't know, and it's gonna, I think you're gonna see, just my theory, but you, most of it's running on a ninety-day cycle. And, uh, if you think about it, everybody's outside right now, and it's pretty weather, if you put ninety days on, we're gonna get ready in there about Christmas, and I think, you know, when we get closed up, I don't know, but we'll adjust as needed. I commend her principals and her teachers and her dying, she's had a, you know, it's been a, been a long year, a bit of a month in already, because they, they've had to manage, own the wheel every day, you know, some different.
Anything else from anybody? Anybody? More questions, we got a few minutes here, we got just done, uh, board meeting starts at five o'clock, you got twenty minutes, you need to go to the restroom, water, or whatever you need to do. Let this thing start then.